Good evening, welcome to the May 22nd Planning Commission meeting. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance. This is the Pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have approval of minutes. And by the way, we love that no one's here. This is so nice and refreshing. It's back to the way it used to be.
So we love that you are all here.
Yes. Yeah, so the true favorites came out to support us. Okay, so approval of the April 24th, 2017 minutes. I, to be honest, did not have a chance to look at it, so I suppose, hope someone did.
I did.
It was really long, yes.
I want to shout out to Melissa. She put a lot of great work into this. I thought she captured the essential discussions, and as a result, this was very useful in terms of the perspective on Green Tree and MXD and all the rest of it. I thought she captured all of it. I would move to approve it.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
If Bob seconded that, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, thank you. Okay, and under Carroll and Frederick County Planners, I see Andrea. Hi.
So, here's an email to you of Bike Head Map. I brought a very large one, if anybody wants it or to see it. The reason, I came before you, maybe in February or so, to ask that it was okay that we shared this at our public meeting in March. We took all of staff comments and we made it into the map that you have here. No changes have taken place since our public meeting in March. And so I'm here today to see if it's okay for us to consider this the final map for the town of Mount Airy. This would go ahead in the draft document being proposed. So, like I said, I can put out the very large maps. I always appreciate large maps. So here is this, and I also brought the changes that the town wanted us to do, if you were curious about how that felt. One there, two.
Okay. You've got some Parks and Rec people. Have you all seen this? Did you take a quick gander at this?
And if anyone wants to come up and see this too, they're welcome to come up here and look at it. Will we share?
And they're all, it's also back there, I think, copies.
Oh, okay. Thanks Andrea.
So like I said, we took this as, we addressed all the comments that Melissa gave to us back in February, but as I said, nothing has been changed since then.
And this was shared with Parks and Recs? This is...
It was shared. You can have a comment real quick.
At the last Nottingham HOA meeting, there was some discussion about this map showing the connection to Nottingham. And I think that we need to go and approach our HOA one more time before we show these linkages going into the Nottingham residence or residential area.
Are there any other neighborhoods where you think we might have that sensitivity?
No, I think the other ones are fine, but I think that in the case of Nottingham, it was brought up that this map was in existence, and there was concern about showing the connection of Rails to Trails to Nottingham. It wasn't that, it was that there was a lot of opposition to it, but it was discussed, and there was a level of concern about it being included in this map. So, I would caution against giving final approval on it until we seek out Nottingham one more time and make sure they're okay with showing that connection.
Larry, will you just identify yourself too?
Larry Hushour, Councilman.
I would suggest, with the way, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. If the way that this, the trajectory of this plan, if there is something that, for instance, you're uncomfortable with that needs to be further discussed, either we show this as a future connection, you know, something in that ways, or taking it off altogether. You know what I mean? Because they are trying to move this plan forward, and I wouldn't want to hold up their progress for one piece unless you think that one more discussion would be adequate. But it's totally up to you. I just wouldn't want it to show something that the town is not comfortable with or the residents aren't comfortable with.
So Larry, I know that people brought some of that up to me as well. But I heard two different parts. One was that a spur of the trail was going to actually go into Nottingham or right up to it, and then as opposed to another part where it's just more of a continuation of the trail that's maybe parallel.
Eastward?
Yeah.
Yeah, the question is, the trail shown going into the Nottingham development?
Yeah.
That would connect Nottingham to Rails to Trails?
Yeah.
At the last HOA meeting, a resident was concerned that by showing it on an existing map, her concern was that it puts it in stone, and there's no way for Nottingham to back away from that.
Right, I mean, that's the concern. That's the piece that I heard, that they were very concerned about as well.
Yeah, we're talking the...
Well, I would be okay with it.
Or just say it's future?
Is that, is it just that it's adopted or planned? Is that maybe a different kind of category we could come up with?
Yeah, we should, like...
Other than adopted slash planned? It does show that it's in another plan. That's typically when we have it as adopted, but if there's another category or something that maybe would be...
Could it be potential? Can we, for other words?
Could you do future connection?
Well...
Yeah, because it's not a certainty.
Rob, if you have anything to add, please feel free. Sorry, gentlemen, we haven't forgotten you.
Let's do...
Sorry to walk in. Rob Scranton, CBI Development, developer of Nottingham. Just two quick comments. The trail to the west that shows on the edge of Nottingham, I believe that is from your master plan, okay? Just, I'm catching up because I just walked in. The second, I don't know, is this a label Rails to Trails Phase Two?
Yes, yes, it's just showing what this part of the connection, what's that, what that is considered. So that is part of there. It's not going up into that area.
Okay, and that is, the piece from here to here is planned, existing, or it's not existing, but it is planned based on the site plan from Nottingham. That was always...
Okay, you're telling us...
Now, the connection into Nottingham is, I think, is what is it, in question, correct?
Right, but, but not that we want to get all into the Nottingham thing, you know, your site plan, but were there trails that were never completed? But are you still planning for those to be completed at this point?
I'm just clarifying. The old railroad bed is owned, I think we've already deeded it over to you though, right? I believe it has been deeded. But the railroad bed was part of Nottingham. That is part of Rails to Trails Phase Two.
Right, right.
I don't know about your phasing, but it was part of Nottingham all along.
Right.
The road, the old railroad bed to the bridge across the river would be deeded. That goes back 20 years, basically. Okay, I think it's happened? I think it has.
I haven't ever seen that.
Okay, anyway, but that roadbed was always contemplated, as was a connection into Nottingham, but not part of Rails to Trails, part of the Nottingham development.
Okay.
Okay, and we are, we met with the state two weeks ago, three weeks ago, had a walkthrough. We're in the process of trying to get through some wetland issues to put in the plan that was, the path that was planned as part of Nottingham. But that would not be, at least it's not contemplated to be...
Connected.
Well, no, it was always contemplated to be connected originally.
Okay, but not to be considered Rails to Trails.
Part of Rails to Trails. Is that accurate?
Yeah, that's accurate. Like I said, the concern that was coming up from the HOA, from the individual at the HOA, was that by putting it on a map, it puts it into the public eye that that is an acceptable route for people to go jogging into Nottingham and, which, I mean, there's an argument to be made if that's a problem or not. I'm just saying it was a concern, so.
And just as a reminder also, this is a planning level alignment, which means it is around this area, somewhere near this area, but it does not mean that that is exactly where it's going. We tried to reflect everything that was within any kind of plan, any kind of master plan, and anything like that, so that's how we got this information. So it's there.
It's there.
Well, could you just simply use the word proposed? You know, proposed Rails to Trails Phase Two.
Well, they're, you mean for Phase Two or for that piece going in?
Yeah, we're just talking about that one piece, not, yeah.
Because there is a part of it that is, in the legend, there is a future connection spot, which just means that it would be sometime in the future. But I kind of feel honestly, honestly, that the adopted slash planned is less committal, if you will, than saying that it's a future connection. Because the future connection means that this is where it's going.
It's going to happen, yeah.
Planned and adopted means that it is located within a plan and it will be considered at the time of which construction.
Could we have a caveat on the bottom of the map, which spells out, spells that out, and that there may be future discussion, you know, with the neighborhoods or HOAs and so forth, that this is not cast in stone?
Absolutely.
Yeah, but isn't that what you're saying it already means?
That is actually what, when, at least from our perspective, when something is adopted slash planned, it is being reflective of the plan. But for instance, if you think about your planned major streets or something along those lines, we put it on a map at this scale, but we, you may not go through someone's neighbor, you know, front yard or something like that. Like the line would be adjusted, it's just showing that we would want it to connect A to B. And where that goes within there is still up for negotiation. We can, we can say however you want to say this.
I don't, we, I just don't think we want to overemphasize, which could actually make everything worse.
I think so, I agree with you.
I just want to be respectful of the neighborhood, the HOA.
Right, I just mean, if you're like, if you're like really focusing on it, because what Larry's saying and what I recall, you know, in speaking to some of these people, is they don't want, they don't want to be drawn attention to in a sense. They don't want people to think we're part of this trail, you know, even if they are. So I think almost bringing more attention to it is defeating their purpose.
Well, and I didn't want to preclude any, you know, further discussions that, you know, may still occur, you know, with the neighborhood.
Well, I don't think we are, based on what Andrea said.
Based on Andrea's explanation.
Something that, maybe just like a little side note somewhere, that trails that are planned slash adopted still need to go through the appropriate...
Perfect, I think so.
...add to everything in their work.
Yes, yes. I agree with that.
Is there Sterling Glen comments?
Do you think that was...
Yeah, Sterling Glen comment, yes. That'd be a lot nicer than the other comment. Actually, I want to include, I would not include it in this. Fine. This seems to be the trail from the back.
You have to, you have to speak from the back.
I know, I definitely, I want to, I don't want to kick off the podium.
It's easy to kick out.
Hi, my name's Carl Munder. I'm just making a comment on the proposed Rails to Trail, not Rails, excuse me. I don't even want to bring that up.
Sir can you just also give your address?
Yes, 2002 Field Brook Lane.
Thank you.
I just got a comment on the lack of the inclusion of the section of the proposed trail from Summit Ridge Soccer Field to Terrogs. That's not in the plan, but it is physically there.
Sure.
So I would like that included, just to make sure that we're...
You can show me where it is. Right here is the Summit Ridge.
Okay, right back here.
I don't know.
Can you show that, Carl? Can you show it over here on this map?
Oh, sorry. Summit Ridge Park is a basically a path, oh, thank you. Basically a path from Terrogs Court that's paved, runs under the power lines, back to the Stormwater Management Plan. That is part that connects over to Broadal Reed. So I would like that included, that whole section included, just so it can be maintained by the town. Is there a paved portion there?
Andrea, did you get that?
He drew it.
Cool.
Everybody looks confused. The body that discussed this last year, that it is a pavement.
It's counted on existing.
It is existing. It was deeded by, by CBI.
So it's not on our existing maps?
I would say no, it's not, because we've had the discussion before, because our HOA, someone complained to the HOA saying it was not maintained. Looking into last year, we were trying to decide who actually owns it, and according to the tax property records of Carroll County, the town owns the path from Terrogs under the power lines to the Stormwater Management area.
Yeah, that was deeded to the town.
Yeah.
I think it's parcel D.
Sure.
That was several years ago.
That's not in this map, so I want it included.
Okay.
We would like it included, it hasn't been taken.
Should be.
I'm sure he doesn't give...
Should be.
Okay, thank you.
All right, do we need to do anything, other than say yes to that?
No, I mean, I, that map does not do anything about the ownership. It doesn't solidify it or change it.
Yeah, yeah.
Deeds do that.
Okay, yeah, so, we just added it.
Delineated it on the map is fine if we want to represent that there's a community connection between those two properties.
So, what I have now is that additional connection, and then on the bottom, somewhere near the legend, it would say that approved slash planned trails would still need to go through the appropriate processes of development.
Okay.
Is that, would that be okay?
Yes.
Seems like a good compromise. Thanks for your flexibility.
I will do my best. I'm not, I'm not the author of this or by any means, but I will definitely go to bat for you on that one. So, I will, and what we'll do is, we will send out a draft map, but they are trying to get this, still continue to move forward and include Mount Airy in the whole, the whole plan itself. So, I will let them know the changes in the morning, and hopefully by tomorrow afternoon they can send out. And then maybe if you can do like just an email, you know, hey, this looks okay, and things like that, we'd really appreciate it. One of the other things I'm here today to talk about is the annual report. So, there was a technical issue as far as my email getting to Heather to get out to the Planning Commission, so what I did was I took the time and mapped out each individual reference to Mount Airy, so that it would be easier for everybody to kind of focus in on where you guys were specifically being discussed. What we're asking for is a letter to be signed by the Chair, telling you about consistency with your plan, and just that you pretty much approve this. We do this on behalf of all the municipalities and the county itself. I did read each and every reference of Mount Airy, so if you have any questions, I can try to answer it for you. This is part of a grander scheme, right? So we go before all of our Planning Commissions in May, so that it can be before the state by July 1st.
Well, I was actually under the hair dryer at the salon reading this.
Well, I'm sure they kept you riveted, but it was very fascinating information.
Yes, Bob was there too.
Always nice to have company.
It was very insightful, especially given that we just had a presentation on the corridor study. This, this gave some, some really good insight to that, because that's kind of like a data dump, you know, 15, 20 years out. This shows us year by year what has occurred. It's also very, very insightful with regard to housing starts, residential and non-residential starts, vis a vis our, our school issue. I mean, so looking at countywide and looking at Mount Airy in comparison to it, and comparing our residential and non-residential numbers in our PDA and our DGA versus total county, and then looking at economic contribution, very, very interesting, very valuable.
Any other comments? Well, I'm fine with going ahead and signing that letter.
Yep.
It was useful and was, yeah. And thank you for pointing out the merit on Mount Airy, except for that would have been even longer under the hair dryer.
Yeah, I mean, that document is long enough. It's always, I always think it's nice to just say, these are the pages that you should be focusing on, and that's that, so.
If the Commission could make a motion and...
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept, we accept the certification from the Planning Commission for the Carroll County 2016 Annual Report.
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Not opposed.
Thank you. There is just one, one last piece of things I want to talk to you about. So I had told you previously that we had started the triennial update for the Water and Search Master Plan, and that each municipality was getting their own month. So, just want to let you know that the town of Mount Airy, their month is June, so I'll be starting to work with the town on their chapter, although it's really exciting because the town has done almost everything already, based on the fact we just did an amendment. So there's very little, other than updating the physical, maybe well numbers and things like that.
We haven't met yet Andrea, though, so.
Oh, man. Way to scare me, I appreciate that, really. I had written Mount Airy off as actually making something else that would be easy, but, okay, I won't do that.
We still have another month and a week.
I won't do that. I will consider this to be the most difficult one, so that I'll be surprised. But, so, I would expect to be here before you guys on the July Planning Commission to ask for certification to your master plan. So, I have just finished three certifications. I'm on the way to my fourth certification from the municipalities. So, we are moving right along. I'm actually kind of a little bit ahead of schedule, which is a little scary. I don't know what's going to happen, but, so, but I just wanted to kind of give you a heads up and let you know that I'll be coming before you.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you.
Here's your letter.
Thanks Andrea.
Awesome. Any other questions or anything I can help answer?
Do you have a question?
No. I have just a thank you.
Oh, thank you. And somehow I missed over Citizens comments in the, in the glee to see Andrea come. If we have any Citizen comments for items not on the agenda, please come to the podium and give your name and address, and don't all run up. Okay, that was easy. Okay, and so Frederick County Planner, we're going to see Tim in June, Heather?
We are, yes. I reached out to him, he was unable to make it tonight, but he has us inked in for June.
Okay, great. So we've already done the Carroll County Annual Report, downtown master plan request for proposal draft, so you've got that. It's just to take a look at it, and we'll have our comments due for the next, for our next meeting, unless someone has something dying to...
This was, this was really cool.
Yes, I read it, I mean, there's just a couple typos, but I read it and looking, I was like, wow.
Yeah, this is, this is well put together.
And did you read that they're going to, the top three are going to present to the planning?
Yes.
That was great.
Well, the neat thing about it, how comprehensive and integrated it is. I mean, the sections to it and everything, it's, this is almost a continuation of the perspective John Eisen was sharing with us, you know, Old Town Center, so.
Yeah, makes sense.
This is most, this is Monica's, these, right?
All of staff, yeah.
All of staff, okay.
Well, all staff did a great job.
We congratulate you.
Very nice. Awesome.
Yeah, it really is.
This, too, is being forwarded to the EDC for their comments at their meeting this Wednesday, correct Councilman King?
Yes.
Yes, so we will ask the same for them to send their comments to us by, for their June meeting.
Do we want to refer to the updated master plan as the 2014 plan or the 2013?
Well, it's the 2013 comprehensive update. It was adopted in 2014.
Yeah, but it's 2013.
But it is referred to as the 2013 update. Yes.
Any other comments? Okay. Great, so if you need to look at it one more time, but I did read it, it was pretty cool. Okay, so on an unfinished business, we have the ordinance 2017-7 text amendment filed by CBI Development, an ordinance, well, you guys can read, so. Okay, so, I don't need to read, I don't need to read to you. Okay. You know, so Rob gave the presentation, I see we've made the change, you know, some of the changes we talked about. Now, and Heather kind of summed it up nicely, it's like, we can send this, we can vote on it, and either send, you know, give a recommendation to Town Council, or did we also want to, you know, we haven't got, you know, MXD is not coming back to us tonight because, you know, Tom has not had a chance to review the comment, or add any comments to it, sorry, he just hasn't. So we have, and there's no point in putting it out for public, you know, when it's not, Tom hasn't reviewed it. So, I guess it's like, we've got two things here, and I kind of want, would we want to go forward with this, or are we going to have any more questions on this, and just send a recommendation to Town Council on this, or did we want to wait and look at, have MXD and this, the text amendment at the same time?
Yeah, but don't they, we have a time limit for this.
We do, and that's where Heather was saying she could...
We do have a time limit. If there is a, if you need like an additional month to study, or, you know, you can communicate that to the Town Council. The code does say that failure to respond in 60 days basically is approval of the ordinance. But if there's something that you're not certain of, or that needs additional clarification, you know, we could...
Okay, well, I know, for me personally, I'm, I'm fine with this, but I, but I wanted to get heads count before.
Yeah, I mean, we, we kind of straightened everything out last night.
Yeah.
And also, I actually thought that we had resolved the whole MXD proposed ordinance as well. I mean, I was resolved with it.
Yeah, well, we were just waiting for Tom, that was, we just for Tom to add his comments, that was off. Yeah, you know, we, we were good.
I mean, right, other than some additional perspective that he might broaden this with, I felt that in our discussion...
Because we were, had to send it to council, right?
Right, yeah.
And then going back through the minutes and, you know, the comments we made there, and referring to this as, you know, MXD light, and it really does...
I know, I saw, I saw that again too.
It works.
MXD light.
It works, yeah.
Yeah, and the numbers, you know, match up.
Yes, yeah, I did that too. I did that math too.
Very comfortable with that.
So I, I'm okay with going forward.
Okay, so anyone want to make a, Patty, any thoughts? Of course, but you do have to come up here, sir. But let me just first find out if anyone else has any thoughts on it. Patty, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, okay, yes, sir.
And just to be clear, we're, we're referring to the ordinance 2017-7. Okay, okay.
Yeah, that part I actually read.
Yes, that's one.
Well, because we have two MXDs, so I just want to...
So, mixed use one does not have any concerns with...
Sorry about that. Hello again, my name's Carl Munder with 2002 Field Brook Lane Sterling Glen Community, and I have some comments on the ordinance 2017, 2017-7, which is the overlay mixed use onto community commercial. First off, I believe that this ordinance should be held off until mainly that the mixed use is passed by the, by the Town Council, more so than you're proposing draft regulations into an ordinance. Basically, the mixed use, even if you approve it, the county, the town, I'm not going to call it county, but Town Council still needs to approve it. So they can still make changes potentially, send it back to you, don't believe this or that. So, this ordinance should be held up until the Town Council passes the true mixed use ordinance. That way you know that this doesn't have to be changed later and come back and do it. If it does go ahead with it, I, we have concerns, for the Sterling Glen potential, HOA has concerns with the development of the property, because going from potential old age or, I want to say, what do they call it?
Age restricted?
Age restricted, active, active adult. Active adult community to potentially putting the mini downtown with 40-foot tall buildings up at the intersection of Candace and South and North Main Street. And as the stoplight goes up there, this corner property will become a hot commodity for development, because there, for you will have a signalized intersection there, because this, as you said, is mixed use light. And actually, there are some drafting errors in this that I picked out. I'm not sure that...
Sorry, there's some what?
Drafting errors in this, if it hasn't been changed. I'm just going by what was sent to me. So if you have changed some, there are some drafting errors in it. And if it does go ahead, I would like to see the drive-through provisions in this removed from it, because you could potentially, not, I'm not, I don't know anything about it, it's just that potential overdevelopment, and Sterling Glen Community would be the only community that would be directly affected by this, because we go by, pass it every day down there. So I don't think a lot of people back there would like to see potential for drive-throughs backing up and commercial development on that, because some people have said, we don't want commercial on that corner, the age restriction was good, and townhouse development, even they don't even want to see that, they would like to see single-family homes up there. But it's up to the owner, I know, it's up to the owner of the property to decide what goes there. I'm not saying, that's what I'm being told, being heard. I, I've just been, I'm just, you know, being said what I've been told.
Can I, while you step here Carl, can I ask some questions?
If it's up to you.
Well, who can answer them if you want. So, so, um, and this came up a little bit last, last month, but in terms of if it were still the fifty-five and over, what, it was, it would still be mixed use, so what, what type of commercial, or what was the building size? I don't, was it forty foot for?
It's less than that. It's two-story, it's already on the plan, it's two-story. It's only twenty thousand square feet total.
For the, for the, okay.
The commercial element.
For the commercial?
For the commercial part, yeah.
No, wait, wait, you're talking about the way you want it now, or the way it would have been?
You asking how it was designed as green tree existing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's two-story, less than forty feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I do have suggestions on how the ordinance could be changed that could alleviate some of the Sterling Glen community, or my community, concerns with it, since I am on the board there too, the HOA board.
Is, is now the time for this?
No.
Well, in a public discussion before the Town Council.
It's the public hearing when that, when this comes up.
That, I would agree.
What's that, the proposed changes or?
No, yes.
The proportion-
We have to go through, we have to go through a process.
Well, that's what I was asking. Well, I'm not sure that I-
And nothing gets, nothing gets, nothing gets, um, voted on. We have, we just make a recommendation, the Town Council-
That's when you respond to that.
Rob can see it, I don't, I mean-
I've been on this task force for four years.
Okay.
Let me just remind where we started, four years ago, as the property is owned today, drive-throughs are by right, and big commercial is by right, they'd have to approve it.
Right.
So, this is, this is a compromise to make everybody feel better. So, just so everybody remembers that, from four years ago.
And, and Carl, um, before I was here, before I was on planning, this property, they were already granted, oh, wait, let me finish. This was zoned commercial.
It still is.
It's zoned commercial.
It's CC.
It's not zoned for single-family homes. So, that, so that was not gonna be, it was not gonna be single-family homes.
I'm just-
So, this is actually, this was a compromise from it being all commercial. So, so just keep that in your, in perspective, when you're thinking about this.
Yeah, people ask me questions, yeah, times, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, and as, as far as what they were just saying is, we, we're rec, we're recommending, it's Town Council who decides whether to pass this.
Right, and there's, yeah, so.
However, however, I, I still, you know, different than maybe some other people on this, on the commission, I think that people, residents, should get an opportunity earlier in the process, and not just at the public hearing, because then so much has been done, and we've heard this in other, other situations.
Well, and that was one of the key points when we talked about the firearms. This body was very disappointed that they didn't have an engaging public during the ordinance.
Right, so I-
When we show up.
Yeah, so-
It's really the truth.
Yeah, so, um, you know, we're not changing that this minute, but just, just something that I think that we, at some point, will, will discuss and contemplate, is that. So, yes, we're interested in your opinions.
Okay, I got you.
But the public, you know, we are-
This isn't a public hearing, this is just to more approve the ordinance out of the-
No, it's, no, we're not approving the ordinance.
No, we just recommend, or, we either recommend it, we make a recommendation either for or against.
Okay.
So, so this vote will be, Town Council, we want you to approve this, or we don't want you to approve it. And then they will make their own decisions, but we are making-
But before they make their decision, they must, public, they must publicize a public hearing. That is where your comments need to come in.
But don't we offer people the ability to make comments?
They can come to any more meeting.
Right.
Well, so, they can comment now on this, if, I mean, not specific to the, his property.
No, I know, yeah.
Right, so, this specific to a property, probably not the most, best use of this time, but if you have specific things, like you said, you found some errors in here and things like that, I would like to hear those, because if we're gonna pass this on to the council, I'd like to make sure we've got it all the way around.
Yeah, it just might be my eyes not seeing where it comes along farther than-
Well, if there's anything that the Planning Commission feels has merit to change before, or send along with a recommendation.
Right.
That's the comments I was gonna make, is just like, change the building height from forty down to thirty, because anything that sits on the hill, Sterling Glen would be able to see. So, a little bit shorter is better than taller. It's just thirty-three, basically, three-story of livable, excluding the roof. And there's three stories of use for that. I mean, drive-throughs, like, thirty feet would be good. And then, let me see what else I have, the permitted use, I'll change that. And then maybe, I'm not sure if this, but maybe as during the election, we found out that people wanted to make comments, maybe have more of a thirty-day comment period on this type of development than the fifteen standard. Would allow people more time to find out about it, and not last minute start delaying or do other, other things.
Yeah, I think, I mean, that, I agree with you, and ultimately, that's the Town Council.
Yeah.
No, though, really, not just about this issue, but we'll need to amend ordinances and to create different timelines and, and public hearings perhaps at the Planning Commission. But that actually has to be amended.
Yeah.
Into law for that to, you know, to be required.
Yeah, and just one other comment on the approval process in here, between this and the mixed use, that was the true mixed use thing. This has a two-step, while versus the mixed use has a three to four-step approval process. I'm just wondering if that should be the same, because you're setting up different standards on the mixed use. Page seven, section, paragraph N, approval process, mixed use development, a CC district shall follow the two-step approval process of concept plan and final site plan in accordance with articles, say, eight of this chapter. In addition, the Planning Commission may require extra time and stuff. That's one, while the mixed use itself has a three to four-step approval process in the same paragraph in that one. And then also, you're referencing under, on page six, paragraph H, it looks like you are trying to reference non-existent sections further down in this document under permitted uses.
I'm sorry, what?
Or permitted uses.
Okay.
It says, reference subsections C, C2 below up to maximum and subsection C1, but there is no subsections further down the document. I'm not saying that's just drafting, I'm just trying to look for the- Let me, let me just make a point, Carl.
Okay, and that, that's very good, and, um, what that refers to, again, Tom, this is Tom's drafting. What this ordinance does is it changes several sections of the code. So, those references are to existing sections within the code. This contemplates additions or changes of the existing code. So, when those references, you don't see them here, it's because they're already in that big thick book over there.
Right.
So, just for clarifications, everybody understands how that works, I, the, the public understands, I know you do.
I was basically gonna say the same thing. We already have existing building heights and, and quite a few zoning laws here. And what we're trying to do is not to have two different sets. Not to have MXD with one completely different set of rules and regulations as community commercial. So, it's, you know, that's why forty-foot building heights and all those things already exist in the code.
Yeah, so, again, uh, Town Attorney drafted this into ordinance form as it pertains to changes or, changes that relates to different sections of the code. We did not draft that part.
Right.
We basically gave him the ideas, he put it into ordinance form that would then change the code as appropriate. The second thing, to address his other question, the, the two-step process was consistent with commercial development.
Exactly, exactly.
In the CC zone, it's a two-step process, not a three-step process.
And this was more like the, the process that we've done for everything else. Whereas MXD is a brand-new, new, new code, a new zone.
But you're applying, but you're putting mixed use into commercial, this is an overlay therefore.
But, but again, there's already existing process for CC.
Okay.
So, MXD light.
Well, well, so-
Well, Mr. Munder, the, the difference between the two-step and the, the three-step is typically residential is subdivision. And subdivision plans, you have your concept, your preliminary, and then, you know, you're fine.
But if you're applying mixed use, even mixed use light, if it's using mixed use, mixed use light, shouldn't that request follow mixed use requirements?
Yeah, this is actually, this is getting the term mixed use light, but actually, that's not what it is. What is, and, and it's a great term. What this actually is, it's a special exception use in a community commercial district. So, it, it actually goes through more than, more processes than the proposed mixed use, because, um, and you're gonna have not only the Planning Commission make a recommendation on this special exception use in the community commercial district, you're gonna have an actual Board of Appeals' public hearing, okay? So, the, the, when a development, um, special exception you, application is filled out, it comes here first for a recommendation to the Board of Appeals. And unlike anything that would be adopted of mixed use as its own zoning classification, the Board of Appeals is actually going to take it through, um, the general standards, which is, it's another layer of review, if you will.
And that, that's why we did this, because we felt like we had more control and we were, and concerns, and this felt far more comfortable.
And then, after, after the, the Board of Appeals determines whether or not, or approves, if, let's say the Board of Appeals would approve a development proposal, or the, the special exception, it comes back to the Planning Commission to go through that two-step process. So, this is actually, um, by having it as a special exception use in the community commercial district, it's a longer process, and it's a more involved process.
Okay, I just want to make, because reading is generally-
No, excellent selection, or suggestions.
In the overlay, some mixed use onto this, it just reads like it's a less of an approval process, more so than-
Right, and one key factor is the fact that this is a special exception. MXD is not a use permitted by right in the community commercial district. This proposes that it's a special exception use.
And it's not really an overlay, I mean, that was the other thing, that's not an overlay.
Right, right. One thing I, I would like to share with the Commission, Mr. Munder, um, suggested that the approval times, um, perhaps weren't long enough, on page eight of eleven. Leslie, I did want to note, um, for you, that on, um, page eight of eleven, number three, um, yeah, like, three A, this is new language for this particular, um, process. So, if the thought was that we should allow an additional, you know, longer than fifteen days, it would be appropriate to suggest that along with the recommendation, if the Planning Commission so wishes.
What are you, what are you looking for, thirty?
Oh, thirty, I mean, just say thirty would be good, I think, I think as a state entity, we use thirty days generally for planning and some, not planning.
I'm fine with it, I'm fine with thirty, I think it should be, I thought it- Yeah.
Sure.
Yes, yeah, let's be fair.
Don't we just, Lucky Reg, because it didn't work?
No.
Okay.
But just, during the campaign, if people, was wanting to comment, people don't have enough time to comment and find out about things.
Okay, that's by the word, no.
I think that's about it. And, and Carl, I have to say, through the entire, um, mixed development process for the year, many years, I've been a, I've been not, not in favor of drive-throughs. So, I certainly, um, appreciate your concern, and, and will state it on the record once we vote on this, that, that I agree with you about the drive-through issue.
And we also have to remember that we're gonna look at this and think that some places are appropriate for drive-throughs and others aren't, so.
Well, it's just where this is drafted with these, uh, used exception of ten acres or more greater than ten acres, it kind of applies just to that chunk of property in, in, in community commercial zoning within the town quarter. So, if it'd be more fair where it applies, you might want to shrink down the exception size to a lower acreage, so it can potentially apply to more community commercial zone properties. Because right now, it's just drafted as, would it only apply, generally apply to just that potential property.
Thank you so much.
Thanks Carl.
You're welcome.
No, it's okay.
I, I, I think the point of confusion is, excuse me, Orion, 806 Park Avenue. I think to clarify a point of maybe possible confusion on Carl's part is that this is different from the mixed use ordinance. There are two separate, one's a special exception process for community commercial, whereas the mixed use is a mixed use ordinance just for mixed use. So, it's a bit confusing, yes.
It's its own zoning classification.
Yes. If it would help- If it would help, maybe one of the members should go to your HOA to kind of explain the process, if that would, if you think that would help to them.
I think that's my idea, I'm assuming.
Okay, any other comments or questions for this board, anybody else out there?
Carl, we, we appreciate, we appreciate you coming forward and, and serving as a conduit, as a liaison with your HOA. We need more of that.
Yeah, it's just, uh, Sterling Glen unfortunately, kind of like, you know, the little side, step, step away from the rest of the community.
It's a step in the right direction.
It's funny how many homeowners associations feel exactly like that.
Well, let's just say the community itself is out, is not in, within, we're within the town limits, but we're not, we're separate from the town, not separate, but. Not separate, we're, we're just not, just a little separate.
We're, we're proud of Sterling Glen, I live in Twin Lakes, we got, we got two dips in the road, and-
But you're our best last section that was built. We don't look at you as like, just over there, we'll have to work on that.
Okay, so, with that said, what, anyone want, want to have a, what recommendations should we make to Town Council?
Well, I still feel a comfort level in being able to make a recommendation to Council on both of these. We've had, we've had some discussion about some tweaks in both the, the green tree piece. Uh, we have to wait for Tom's input, so, how much can we tee up? I'd like to do as much as we can, but, and we're not-
One thing about Tom's feedback that we shouldn't-
Can't do anything really with it.
We can't do anything that-
Right, we can't, we can't, we can't even post it up to the public, because he isn't-
When the ordinance 2017-7, Tom has been involved with-
Oh, you did.
With yours, he reviewed, except for the red, which is fairly minor in, in nature.
It's not that much.
Well, that's, that was changing it to be consistent.
With your comment.
Right, with what, with the other MXD changes, yeah.
In, in dealing with Tom on this, he did say that it's very common for this exchange of these kind of changes that would go between you and then ultimately to the Planning Committee, I mean, to the Council. And once your recommendation goes with the changes that are made here, he would review it one last time as he presents it to the Council for setting a public hearing.
Great.
And will offer, if, if he sees things that needs to be changed, he will offer that to the Council at that time.
He sees anything that was done here as contradictory, or, or in, you know, in conflict with other sections of the code, that's part of his review as he develops the final ordinance that would be signed by the mayor if it was approved. So, this is part of the process, as he explained it to me as well.
Right.
Yes, thank you so much.
And a lot of his review is legalese, there are certain ways to word things. So, it doesn't necessarily change the context, but it-
Twice as many warehouses as you have now.
Makes it sound like Leslie or Tom rooting.
Well, I will, do we do this as a motion?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, well, I will make a motion that we recommend to the Town Council that they approve ordinance number 2017-7 with changes, as discussed, made to page eight of eleven. And that looks like it's-
Section three.
Section three.
A and B.
Yeah, section three, A and C.
No, B.
You have fifteen days notice.
Oh, yeah, B, C.
A through D.
A through D. Anywhere there's fifteen days notice would become thirty days notice. And I would also encourage the Council to consider the drive-through issues if the community has any concerns about them.
Is that in your motion?
That doesn't have to be my motion, that can just be a side comment.
Just checking.
That's an aside. We'll take that, we'll take that out of the motion.
Okay. And you want the, as revised, as the other things have been revised in there as well?
Like, all the, the red. Yes, included in the motion is everything in the red that has, has been revised to be consistent with our prior discussions in the April 2017 Planning Commission meeting.
Got that Heather?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it's right there in there on, on the CD.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, consideration.
Okay, and this will go, um, in front of the Town Council at June fifth. Um, at the June fifth meeting, they will set a public hearing, most likely, June fifth, am I incorrect? No, it'll, it'll go forward for their, considering, they're gonna set a public hearing.
Gotcha.
Um, it, most likely in July, so, okay, and that'll be advertised and-
The first one in July, July fourth.
Yeah, so we go to the second one.
So, it'll be July, it'll, I think July eleventh is what we decided on last month.
Actually, yeah, July- Actually, yeah, July, oh, July eleventh? Okay.
So you're saying it'll go to the council on the fifth, then they'll set the public hearing that night for the...
July eleventh, I believe.
July tenth.
Tenth.
Is it tenth?
Well, the eleventh's a Tuesday, but sometimes you guys do that, so...
No, it'll be, it'll be Monday.
It'll be that Monday, okay, so...
I think we decided.
Theoretically.
Yeah. Pencil it in for July tenth, as long as there's no major conflicts.
Right, okay, thank you so much. So now, for the MXD draft, you understand that that's in Tom's hands and has not been reviewed. He was at a conference last week, I understand, so it is what it is. So Heather, do you think we'll, he'll have a chance to look at it by the next meeting? Not that you know the schedule, but...
I do, I do. It, May unfortunately was a bit of a hectic month throughout, and the only, there's just some, like on page five of fourteen specifically, we have the amendments to concept plans, that's, those are the areas that I really would feel more comfortable with legal review.
Right, okay, no, that's fine. Okay, so going, any other questions, comments?
One thing I'll go ahead and mention, I think this is, I think this is essentially ready for prime time, but I think it also brings up another opportunity we have as a planning commission, and that is, over time, this gets passed relatively soon, we need to do our own market study, so we have a sense of what's realistic for this market.
Right, and Heather's brought that up, that we cannot depend upon someone who comes up as a developer, we really need to put down the money and have our fa, have the facts, and she's brought that up and totally agree.
Well, only because we are, we are going to be told the market will support that, and I wouldn't be able to...
It's like the analogies of, I'm an accountant, but then I'm a brain surgeon on the side, sure.
And also, it's important, it can also, you know, help the town decide, you know, what is that commercial ceiling limit that you're looking for? You know, our master plan guides us that we want to focus on commercial development and that we need to increase our commercial inventory, but what is that number? And, you know, and we're also going to be told that we need a certain amount of residential, we're going to need rooftops to support that commercial development, and I think it's good to have, you know, some independent guidance.
Agreed. So thank you. Okay, next, on the master plan implementation, work plan items, with the Maryland twenty-seven corridor study that we all attended, and then there's also going to be, they're going to be doing another briefing at the town council too, right, Heather?
They are, they are.
Is that next meeting?
It is June fifth, yeah, and, and what I would like the planning commission to do, or what I would suggest, is that if there was anything that during that, you know, presentation or anything in the draft report itself that you have concerns about, or that you just want, you know, some additional clarification, that, you know, you just submit those comments to the town council, either as a group or individually, or you can send them to Barney and I. When we, when we have the presentation to the town council, the town council is not going to be asked to accept that document right there, it's still in draft form. We want to make sure that everybody has time to digest it and, you know, let it sink in a little bit, maybe hear the presentation for the second time, and just, you know, make your comments, you know, maybe some things will occur to you as far as some of the road connections, you know, there's some policy suggestions within that document, so...
Actually, that's a good point for a second time, because it was a lot of information. I know I felt kind of like weighed down when I left, or maybe paved over by a road or something, because it was just a lot.
Yeah, it's really technical, that information.
Yes, yes, it was, so I, you know, for those of us, I know Leslie couldn't make it, but for those of us who did attend, again, it's another evening, but I think it's, might be worth it.
Or it is televised, if you want to stay in the comfort of your own home, you can tune in to channel twenty-three.
That's true.
Or you can stream it live.
Yeah, DirecTV doesn't have that channel.
Okay, well, you can go online and you can stream it. Actually, do you have cable? Do you have, you have Comcast?
No.
No, she's got DirecTV.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, DirecTV doesn't have Comcast.
You can, you can go ahead and stream that online. For those who aren't Comcast subscribers, go to the CMC website and they'll have a live stream.
CMC?
Mm-hmm, Community Media Center at Westminster.
I missed a, I missed a town council meeting, and I was actually in Arizona, live streaming a town council meeting.
Cool.
Really?
Yeah, it didn't work very long, after about ten minutes, it would frits out, then you'd have to go back, go back and try to catch it again.
Patty, you're still welcome to come to my house.
You can have a viewing party.
Well, okay.
I'll bring the line.
I'll be there. Okay, so open space regulations are valued, there's a continued discussion and it's scheduled for the June planning commission meeting?
Yep, provided the town engineer will be here, we will be discussing that.
Yes.
Okay.
So the last time we talked about it, was Monica going to be involved, or is it...
Yes, and we have a scheduled discussion with Monica.
Okay, okay.
That's right, we asked them to see if they could simplify approach.
Oh, yes.
Yes, but we wanted to, because I, you know, I know Bob would want it in thirty days, but since we don't know the workload, that's, but we will have it by June, don't worry.
I don't know, I don't know why we think Bob wants all this stuff.
Okay, okay.
Does he really use?
Okay.
Well, yeah, that's a good reason.
Okay, so the joint town commission meeting, July two thousand seventeen, is as dated, still to be determined? That's with all the commissions, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so still working on the logistics, Heather?
Yes, and Bill, he sent out a draft email today, or a...
Yep.
To coordinate.
Debbie's going to check first.
No, I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
These guys got it.
Those two get it.
I didn't...
To start with.
Oh, I didn't get anything.
You keep not getting.
I don't know, well, yeah.
Check your spam, did you check your spam?
Somehow...
Oh, I'll check my spam.
Lindy's email address was, instead of, well...
It got messed up.
There was one letter, and I noticed it, and I was like...
Oh, oh, oh.
Okay, Bill, if I don't find it, I'll just reach out to you.
I use Katie's updated...
Yeah, then that might be where the little issue...
Maybe that's the problem, okay, I'll go back and...
Go to what populates when you key in, Lindy.
Okay. Okay, well, anyway.
This was just the preliminary announcement, because Debbie's got to check.
Bill, I'll reach out to you tomorrow, okay?
Right.
And for those that are unaware, Bill has planned this twice in the past.
And never made it.
And every, every time, he's ended up in the hospital, that particular...
I know, are you sure, Bill, are you sure we should be doing this?
So, you know, he's won for free.
I'm turning loose of it.
Because I did the first time, and you did the second.
Was all ready to go.
Well, you know, I did the first, and then you did the second by yourself, okay. Okay, county, council liaison report?
Okay, let's see, John Stumare was appointed as the alternate to the Economic Development Commission, Zach Peters invited Peter Franchet to visit us on the eighteenth, which was last Thursday, he came and we had a great time, he conducted a small business roundtable, he visited miscellaneous distillery, says that miscellaneous distillery is the first distillery since prohibition in Carroll County.
Wow. Wow.
So that's, you know, that's pretty good.
Totally.
Let's see, economic development is, they've got some discussions underway about possible loan programs to help mountainary businesses, mom and pop loans, five thousand dollars, you know, trying to come up with some criteria now. May eighth, the Route twenty-seven corridor study was released with public comment accepted. The same evening, the fiscal year two thousand eighteen budget was adopted by the town council at a special meeting. On the fifteenth of May, Larry Hushour, yay Larry, and Scott Strong were sworn in as new councilman, well, Larry is a new one, Scott is a returning. Peter remains the council president, Councilman Poyer was unanimously elected as a secretary, and Debbie Brennan continues to serve as the town clerk, and that is my report.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion around like the downtown mountainary, like what the plans around the parking, or any of the issues around the proposal for the flatiron building, any of that?
I don't, I don't think we have anything scheduled as of right now, do we, Barney?
No, not, not at this time.
Okay, it is going to happen, it's just getting through the election and finding out exactly what, what that was going to look like, and now...
Okay.
Also, one, yeah, one, one quick thing here, we had a rookie out there as, running as a town councilman, and I was very proud to support her. She did an outstanding job, and I hope that she continues to hang around and maybe try it again. But Leslie, Leslie got a large amount of the votes, and I was very impressed, and, you know, Larry did an awesome job, I thought, I thought all the candidates, Carl, Carl back there was a candidate, so I think is, well, other than, other than Scott Strong, I think everybody's here in the room right now.
Yeah.
Thank you all for a very, very, I mean, I'm serious, information was readily available, I love politics at this level, and you guys played the game really well.
When was the last time we had a twenty-nine percent turnout?
Right.
And we can only hope that Leslie will stay on planning. Very happy to. Okay, so next planning commission meeting is June twenty-sixth, and zoning administrator report, we have it right in front of us, and that's it.
One, one real quick last thing on the, I forgot, this, this Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, at seven o'clock, the EDC will be at the Mountainary Tavern. We do about every quarter, I think, we try to, not Mountainary Tavern, Mountainary Inn, upstairs at the Mountainary Inn, at the, at the top of the hill here on Main Street. We try to do, huh?
This Wednesday?
Yes, we try to have some economic development input every once in a while, and so we'll meet about once a quarter at, at one of the local restaurants in town. So if you, if you're coming down here for the meeting, go up to the, go up to the Mountainary Inn, seven o'clock Wednesday.
Not to be confused at five o'clock with the Diamond Jubilee at American Legion, which is the town's effort to say thank you and appreciation for everyone who's seventy-five years or older, and who sends back an RSDP, and there'll be about two hundred of them at the Legion.
And a lot of us are getting really close.
All of the service clubs collectively provide that.
Cool.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, I want to stay.
It's too early.
Okay, there's a motion, my duties, duties are second, Leslie's second, there for this evening, this meeting is adjourned at eight oh five, another record, thank you, Heather.
Well, no, I, it's, I don't expect June, I think we're going to have projects, so...
Okay, well, we will pay for this, don't worry, guys.
No.
Good night.
It's because the projects weren't...
Robert, thanks for all your hard work.
We can do it.